Good evening, everybody. I have called to order the city council meeting for November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three here at City Hall. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Council, before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, wanted to let you know that a portion of our executive session listed for tonight as potential litigation has been canceled. We will still have the executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, and we have moved that to occur before item eleven, which is the council vacancy and appointment. So we will have council vacancy and appointment as the final portion of the agenda tonight. So without objection, if I get a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. It is unanimous. With that, we will move to citizen comments. Oh, the pledge, the pledge. Well, I'm off my game. I'm already jumped on. But since you called for it, Mr. Rosen, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the flag for which it serves, one nation under God,
Thank you for keeping me appropriate. I know how dangerous that can be. That's why we always keep a good separation between the clerk and I, especially with you between us. Yeah. All right. With that, then we will be moving now to citizen comments. If you would like to speak to council about an item not on tonight's agenda, this is your time to comment. You're here in chambers. We'll ask you to move to the podium one at a time, of course. You'll start with name and address for the record. If you are online, you'll indicate in the chat box or by star nine, and we will call on you after we've first done chambers. Anyone here? I had a feeling.
So I'm Deborah Landers, one four six one five, four hundred thirty-eighth Avenue Southeast. And once again, I'm here representing North Bend Art and Industry. Just another quick reminder that Artist Sunday is a Sunday after Thanksgiving. We're all geared up to have a pretty amazing celebration at the North Bend outlet stores. So they've given us eight thousand square feet. Well, not given, but almost eight thousand square feet. We've got over forty artists, two amazing musicians, a live Santa, who is at no cost, although he's taking donations for for local nonprofits, if they choose to do that. Let's see. The other thing I wanted to let you know is these these events that we do for artists are really a big deal for artists. Finances. So while we have forty artists, that's as many as we could fit into the space, we have twelve still on a waitlist, and the waitlist continues to grow. So the need and the desire for this type of opportunity for artists to show and sell their their art and their work is really just there's there's just a lot of enthusiasm around it. So just want to let you know that it's we we we're at capacity, and we could have taken more, quite a bit more. The other thing that we're doing at the outlet mall that I'd like for you all to think about next year for downtown North Bend is we're doing a window painting contest. So the outlet mall has sponsored this so that there's a prize for the grand prize winner. We provided the paint, and the theme is just winter in the Northwest. And we have, I think there's eight artists that are painting, just finishing up their painting today and tomorrow. The contest will go online tomorrow evening. So go and look at the window paintings at the mall. It really is pretty incredibly beautiful. We had experienced artists, and we had high school students doing some really cool paintings, too. Voting will commence online, but if you can see it in person, it's always a much better experience. So I encourage you to go down to the outlet mall tour, check out all of the windows, vote for your favorite window because they're going to win a big prize. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else here in chambers? Being no one rushed to the podium? Do we have anyone online?
Not at this time wishing to speak.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to commission and committee reports. Counsel, I will beg of you, keep your reports as short as you can tonight, since we have an extensive agenda. And with that, we will start with economic and community development. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, oops, we canceled our meeting for today, and we will, this is as short as I can make it, by the way, December nineteenth is when we'll meet again.
That's short and sweet. Thank you. Mr. Godell, finance and administration.
Thank you. Finance and administration met at the City Hall adjournment room, November fourteenth at four P M. We discussed the resolution designating the two thousand twenty-four paper of record. We have a lot of options, or in cementing tax rates and fee schedules, and we discussed the continuing amending of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget, which is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosen, public health and safety.
See if it would be shorter than Councilmember Miller. Didn't meet.
Good report. Ms. Miller, back to you. Transportation and Public Works.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I will be a tad bit longer. For TPW, we did meet on the twenty-fourth of October, and we had about seven items on our agenda. I'll kind of bear with me here. The first one was a motion was preliminary engineering services contract with parametrics. We already discussed that. So Ichio, I'm sorry, Ichio preliminary plat map. Excuse me if I slaughtered his name. I apologize to the public for that. We discussed that. We adopted the ordinance to repeal MBMC twenty dash dot twelve dot zero five zero related to wastewater treatment capacity sewer. And then we adopted an ordinance that also on November seventh that was an amendment to the MBMC section seventeen dot zero eight dot one five zero relating to the application requirements for preliminary plats. Then we had a backstop netting to Torgeson Park Quad Field Baseball Complex. We talked about that, and we also discussed alternative shared use bridge types. I think that was it, and we're going to meet again December twelfth.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen?
Yes. So our last North Bend work study was on October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. In City Hall, we talked about the mid-bianium budget review. And secondly, we talked about human and community services funding review. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Scott Health, back to you. Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick on that. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting met Wednesday, November eighth, at the headquarters, spent a lot of time recognizing promotions of battalion chiefs and lieutenants. On the agenda, the biggest thing on the agenda was to equipment replacement, fund reallocation. We were ordering some new equipment, and as you probably know, equipment or vehicles went up in cost. So just move money around from other funds to be able to take up the additional costs. So that was a good one. We also discussed the two thousand twenty-four legislative agenda and agenda calendar, and we discussed having everybody getting all their information into me for the fire chief review before the end of the month, and that was it.
Very much. Stemming Commission Reports.
The Planning Commission met on November fifteenth and held a public hearing on the draft Economic Development Element for the two thousand twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Following the public hearing and deliberation, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation of approval on the draft. The Planning Commission will not likely meet in December. Their next meeting will be January third for a public workshop on land use and zoning designations for updates to the land use and housing element as part of the two thousand twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The workshop will include discussion of policies and potential amendments to meet state required legislative changes and discussions on dockets related to land use designations and zoning that were received during the two thousand twenty-three docket process. The Parks Commission did not meet in October. They will next meet November twenty-ninth to discuss their annual report to the council on the two thousand twenty-three activities and plan for their two thousand twenty-four work program. A special meeting of the Economic Development Commission was held November seventh. The purpose of the meeting was for the commission to discuss their economic development goals and priorities for two thousand twenty-four. Following the overview and discussion, the commission selected projects for the commission to work on in two thousand twenty-four to advance their priorities and support implementation of the Economic Development Action Plan. At the regular commission meeting on November twenty-eighth, the commissioners will review a draft work plan to support implementation of those priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional committees. One regional report. Ms. Cullen?
Okay. King County Board of Health through Sound City Associations met on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at one o'clock via Zoom. They discussed that masking will be recommended, but not mandated in healthcare facilities. They talked about, they called it OSS, which means onsite sewage system regulations and changes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Just report that PSRC did not meet this month, nor did GMPC, nor the Flood Control District. With that, we'll move on. Main agenda, item number five. Your packet is A B twenty-three dash one three four. This is a continuation of the public hearing for an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-four property tax levy.
Drew, you're up. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Before you tonight, as the mayor said, is the property tax ordinance. The city of North Bend must adopt its property tax ordinance by November the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and file it with King County for property taxes to be collected in two thousand twenty-four. The city is currently limited to a one percent increase in property value revenue over the two thousand twenty-three base property tax plus an increase from new construction and utilities. There are two ordinances for your pleasure this evening, one that does not include the allowable percentage increase and one that does. The difference between the two ordinances is twenty-two thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars in property tax revenue. The administration is recommending option number one, the one that does not include the allowable increase percentage for a total regular property tax levy of two million five hundred seven thousand four hundred eight dollars and an excess levy of one hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. So with that said, I'd like to turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. And since we do have an ongoing public hearing, my intent counsel is we'll conclude the hearing and then move to seeking a motion coming out of finance. And then we can have our usual conversation around the ordinance. If there's a member of the public that wishes to speak on this item here in chambers, you please move towards the podium now. If you are online, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine.
Robin Baucham, two four six Old Alley Place in North Bend. Sounded a little bit like Chinese, but I did get property taxes out of what he just said. And so I would want it noted that the public feels like they are duly and properly and overly taxed. So I would vote anything, please, or encourage. I have no vote, but I would certainly encourage, please don't increase our property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in chambers? Seeing no one get up, do we have anyone online?
No one online at this time wishing to speak.
Thank you. Scott Health, I believe this would come through you.
Yes. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one thirty-four, an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-four property tax levy as set forth in option number one as a second and final reading.
Thank you. Motion. Do I have a second?
Sure. Second.
I can I got a second by Mr. Rosen.
Mayor, do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, God, it's Susie. Yes. Close the public hearing at seven fourteen. Thank you, Susie.
You need me to read it again?
We can. We can let it stand, can't we? We'll let the motion.
All right.
Opening stand. Wow, I'm off my game.
We have those days.
You made the motion. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, just I think that, you know, one of the things we're always talking about is, you know, cost of housing and everything else. And I know it's a very small amount from us because it's a very small amount we get from poverty tax, but anything we can help with our citizens in not increasing taxes during an inflationary time to me sounds like a good move. So I do hope the option one does pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Sure. I will echo my friend, Mr. Godell. I think it's been about eighteen years, and I believe you, ma'am, might be the first person to ever actually speak about property tax at our public hearings. So thank you. Believe it or not, yes, that never really occurs. So thank you for speaking up. I also agree that adding one percent, although minor and small, is still symbolic, and anything we can do to try to hold the line on taxes is, I think, our job. And we can always look at our spending if we are in a pinch. But if there is a specific program that somebody has that is well thought out, I think, as a council member, open to listen and here to discuss it. But that's pretty much where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Elwood?
Well, I would I would ask that we reconsider the one percent on this particular one. I've been an advocate for this. And the reason for that is that this is a property tax, yes, but it's a very small property tax, relatively speaking. Its power is in the incrementality. What we've decided to do as a council is focus on affordability and really start helping folks that that need help in this expensive era. And the only way we can do that is through pennies and change and cents. That's exactly what this is. The incrementality will add to our affordable housing reserves. There's different situations that we could apply this specifically, senior housing, senior rental subsidies, and things like that. So I'd urge my colleagues to reconsider this for the point of this particular discussion at this time. In the past, we have accepted the one percent, and we've usually dedicated it to a specific community need such as fixing sidewalks or something like that. So once again, I would tell you, ask you to look at page thirty-four of the PDF. When you look at the estimated property tax values, you're looking at anywhere, you know, it costs more to get a latte than it does to adopt this one percent for most for most houses that are in North Bend. Again, the incrementality is something worth considering, so I just opened that up for discussion at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, did I see you? No? Mr. Jocelyn?
Well, I'll pile on. Absolutely. I sit here, you know, as an elected representative of this city, and I choose to frame that as looking out for its best interest. And while I appreciate the public coming forward and share the sentiments of my fellow counsel. If I'm not wrong, this is like six cents per month on a million dollar home. And I don't even the latte reference. I know it rubs people the wrong way. I know, you know, it's wrong. It's wrong to infer in any way that people are tapped and stressed and taxed beyond any reasonable frame of reference in that. I mean, but let's do remind ourselves this state has no income tax. We do all benefit from public services, and we are here as public servants in these rare moments when we come together and we have this great power. You know, it's a superpower. We get to make choices that impact people's lives. But that happens in many ways. And these dollars, these six cents on a million dollar home, stay in this town. We are the people. Any, you know, the sales tax, we get a little percentage on. Any other taxes, this this city is very limited in their revenue streams that it has available to it. And this council has worked very hard to put in place a commercial base in addition to a residential base, and we benefit from it. If you compare this town to the town just up the road there, we pay about half to this city of what residents in Snoqualmie pay. You know, per per mill rate on their homes, on their property, and that's a credit to the people sitting here and the folks who've come before them. But increment, we all know, if you skip a year in your pension investment, that's going to cost you tens of thousands of dollars down the road. This this twenty-two thousand dollars five years from now as a staff person. And the other thing I have to point out is it costs, as we all know, part of why we're tapped is costs are going up, this city alone. Now, look at the, you know, the significant, most significant aspect of what the city pays is in in staff costs and staffing. And there's more people here every year, and there's more roads to be plowed, and there's more work to be done. There's not less. And if we don't take this sort of incremental financing, then there will be less services and a lower level of service, you know, lower service levels. And I don't think that's what people are asking for or expecting from us. And the sound decision in this case, as we, you know, I'm about to retire, and I looked, and I know, I just discovered I had, you know, no, this is a true story, an absolute true story. And I'm sorry, I'll go real quick. Here's a piece of pay from the year two thousand that I worked for the state of Washington in nineteen eighty-five for two years, and it turns out they had two thousand dollars of my money that I'd lost track of, and it's worth seventeen thousand dollars, and I just learned about that. Well, that's that's exactly what this, you know, that's how this works, and we know that. And I'm sorry for the burden, but the burden is small, the benefit is large, and, you know, the return on your investment relative to any other taxes that anyone might think of asking of you. And it is an ask, and I want to acknowledge that I recognize it's an ask. At the same time, there's trade-offs, and I would encourage my fellow members to reconsider, and I will, given the option, that support option too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen?
Of course, I hate raising taxes. Nobody likes that. It doesn't feel good. But to my colleagues, Brendan and Mr. Jocelyn, it's true, it takes, we have to make money to pay for services, and it is a small percentage, even though it's a percentage. And I also am picking option number two.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
And I'll be brief because I'm obviously going to be option number two. I feel strongly about this. So I want to protect our people out there for the reasons that we've been speaking speaking into tonight. Appreciate the the conversation.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, while having heard the expression. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to point out, we, Brendan, we got to spar one last time. Um, we talk about needing funds to pay for services and government needs to take care of its citizens, and I agree with all those statements. But the state of Washington's population in the last ten years has grown about sixteen percent. The state budget has almost doubled. I believe it went from about thirty-two billion to about sixty-five billion. So yes, we don't have an income tax, but we certainly have a huge revenue stream, and our revenue stream is growing much faster than our population. So there are funds available. It's a question of what we choose to do with those funds that should be what we're discussing here tonight and at the state level. I agree and understand that the amount that we take in here is very small, but we are part of that big picture. And that is something to keep in mind, how much the state budget has swelled in the last ten years. And maybe as a conversation in the future about Olympia being a little more responsible with its with its funds as we continue to grow at a pace that does not come close to the pace of the government. So I'll add that to it and leave it at that.
Thank you. All right. So counsel, what I was going to suggest, you have one or two ways, from what I'm hearing, well, we got a couple of ways. There could be a motion made to amend. We could take a vote on the motion as as given and see where it lands. I think we know where it's going to land, or the motion could be withdrawn. So I'll look first to the motion maker if he is inclined toward the ladder.
Well, seeing the fact that I'm in the minority on this, I will pull the motion and put the other option on, but we'll be continuing to vote against it. I really find it interesting that we sit here and talk about affordable housing. And if you take a look at the cost of people's property taxing, we're taxing people out that are on fixed incomes. And I know it's a very small amount, but I think it goes a long way in sending a signal that says we truly want to do something. But obviously, I'm in the minority. So I'll go ahead and move the most, change the motion for you. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one thirty-four, an ordinance adopting two thousand twenty-four property tax levy as set forth. It's an option two as a second and final reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Cullen. Scott, I'll thank you. Preambled with with your comments. Do we have any more conversation before I call for the vote? Mr. Elwood?
I respect your, both my colleagues' point of view, and I do agree that their Washington, the state of Washington, does put onerous tax burdens on our citizens. We do have, as a state, though, benefits, even within the King County, where there's property tax relief that I think impacts and provides relief for folks on the fixed income that you're talking about. So there are programs in place, albeit they may not be the best case scenario. But honestly, when you're looking at houses of eight hundred thousand dollars and paying six dollars over the course of the year with this particular one percent, it is pennies on the dollar, and is something that we can use for folks that do need subsidies and do need to have more affordable relief within the city. It puts the power in our hands. It adds to our affordable initiative, affordable housing initiative in many different ways. So I don't know if that will convince you or sway you any other way, but I do appreciate and respect both of your opinions on that. And I would encourage anybody who is interested to take a look at the packet that was available tonight. Drew put an excellent bunch of documentation in the back of our of our packet here that really does a fine job of explaining the different taxes and where the money goes, what we're going to get out of it, and certain relief programs that are currently available. So please take a look at what is here, and you might feel a little bit differently about this initiative. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Godell.
We keep bounding this fact that this could be used for subsidies or low income. I don't, I mean, it's not set that way. We have that sales tax that does that. Property tax goes into, you know, the general fund. It's it's, we would have to allocate out of the general fund. So I'm trying to understand what your statement is, what you think it's going to do for affordable housing.
That's me. That's a great question. So with this particular motion, if we amended it to apply it to our affordable housing reserve, then the dollars will specifically be dedicated towards that.
Thank you, and thank you for looking for recognition, Mr. Elwood. I run it pretty loose, as you know, but I appreciate that. Mr. Jocelyn?
Since this is the time of year when we're talking about budgets and financing, Brendan drew attention to Mr. Boat's fine presentation. One of the challenges we face, and this is an effort to educate us and the public, Washington has a funny way of doing budgeting. Most states and most entities, the city picks a percent, and that's what's applied against property. In this case, what happens is the city council, we're here coming up with a number that we think it's going to take to run this city. And we pass that number off to the county assessor. And at a moment in time, there's a snapshot that's taken of what all the assessed value is of this city, and the amount that's coming to the city is assessed against that moment in time, what each property is valued at. And it's a changing. So this is why it's never stable, forever changing, really hard to predict, individual impacts of any individual decision, because if commercial properties are worth more or less or residential property, we all understand it's it's this changing bottom of the sea, but the level of the water never changes, at least from the perspective of the city. And one of the points I want to try and make clear is that we aren't going to pass a budget, and if next year the this the county reassesses the value of my property and it doubles or something, that doesn't mean that my taxes or the amount of money that I contribute towards the running of this city doubles as well. There's that comes out in the wash. The the amount of money that this city asks for does not change year to year. That's what we're here deciding. We pick a number. The county assesses that across all residents and properties in the city, and we move forward with that understanding. You know, it's complicated and complex, Mr. Boat's presentation. I called it out at the time as one of the most concise, clearest representations of that story that I'm aware of. So if you're interested, I reaffirm my councilmember Elwood's encouragement that you take a look at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well done. So I'm not going to try for the complexity of this, but the motion that involves option number two, which is known as the one percent increase, as the papers in front of you show, it doesn't quite work out that way through some convoluted formula, which, yes, our finance director explained better than I've ever seen before, and I compliment him again for that. So the motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three four, an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-four property tax levy as set forth in option number two as a second and final reading. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries four to two with Mr. Rosen and God Health voting no. Thank you very much, counsel. Appreciate that. We'll move on to item number six. This is A B twenty-three dash one three five. This is also This is A B twenty-three dash one three five. This is also a continuing of a public hearing on ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four mid biennial budget modification. Buddha, it's up to you again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, council members. Once again, before you tonight, within this agenda bill is the mid biennial budget amendment back for a second reading. It is a prudent financial practice to periodically adjust an adopted budget to reflect major changes to sources such as revenues and transfers in or uses, which includes expenditures and transfers out that occurred during the year and were unanticipated at the time of budget adoption. Budget amendments are the tool by which the city can address these unforeseen changes, ensure that remains within its legally authorized budget limits. Within this agenda bill, the administration is requesting additional appropriation of seven point two three million to cover multiple amendment requests, including setting aside funding to continue discussions on the twenty twenty-four decision card process, establishing two new funds, the Reserve Fund and the Affordable Housing Fund, an appropriation to support a property acquisition, and other smaller funding trups and requests that primarily reflect agenda bills counsel passed earlier in the year. The additional appropriation of seven point two three million that includes a two point four five million dollar increase in transfers out to other funds within the city would be supported by approximately three point eight seven million dollars in unaccounted for revenues such as unrecognized grants and transfers in from other funds within the city and approximately three point three six million in fund balance that the city carry forward over from the previous biennium. And so with that said, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Drew. And again, excellent explanation, even though it can be hard to follow. We do have a public hearing open, so counsel, again, I will first turn to the public, get our final comments. This time, remember to close the public hearing before we move to a motion. If you are a member of the public and wish to speak on this item, please step to the podium, and we'll have you start.
Hi, I'm Robin Balcom, two four six Old Alley Place, North Bend. Pardon me. Again, didn't have time and, but I get the gist of it. I'll just say, as a member of the public, a very involved person in our community, I take the time to talk to various people that work for the city because I actually believe they work for me because I pay the taxes and all that kind of thing, and I don't take that in a, you know, weird way, but I do want to see what they, how do you feel about your job? I asked every city worker I asked, I said, what do you think about the mayor's race? I mean, I ask, and they're, oh, I don't know, I better not say. And so I don't take their notes, but one conversation I had recently was from someone who works in the I don't know if you call it public works that does the kind of maintenance to the plants and stuff like that along. And of course, I will not reveal who the person is. I don't even remember their name. But I did have, it was my conversation. It's not hearsay. And we were talking about a particular area that they were working. And I said, how often do you work in this area? And it was on one of the roundabouts. Actually, I would call it the main roundabout. And he said, we come three or four times a year. I was like, wow, I thought so, because it's really kind of out of out of, it doesn't look very good. And I said, well, is it because you don't have enough employees? Oh, no, 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 that's not it. And I said, well, is it because, I said, you know, is there a reason? Because my husband owns a small business here in North Bend. So we are very invested. We own our home here, not own it, we are paying for it, but we also have a business. And he said, no, I don't know why we don't come by here more often. And I said, oh, and he said, well, we get paid more than we're worth. And I was like, oh, well, and I was kind of like, oh, that's interesting. So again, I haven't, this is the first meeting I've been to. I've only been to one other meeting. I know that when I hear that the state has a surplus and, oh, we've got this extra money. I have a friend who offered to help at the school with a fundraiser for their cheerleading group, and they said, no, 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 we don't do fundraisers. We got way more money than we can spend in our little. And so as a taxpaying citizen, that concerns me, and I'm not accusing or pointing fingers at anyone, but I wonder if this one percent, it always is a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. So once again, I think the gist of my conversation is if we're talking about the budget, then I value transparency and I value, you know, efficiency and and that we're trying to be good stewards of the money that we, the taxpayers, you know, pay into the system here. So that being said, just wanted to add a little to my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in chambers? Seeing none, anyone online?
Not at this time.
All right. And with that, close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Mr. God help, I think I will look back to you, sir, for a motion.
All right. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one thirty-five, an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four mid biennial budget modification and twenty twenty-four salary schedule as a second and final reading.
We got a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Elwood. Thank you. Mr. God help, anything?
Yes, this is just a kind of, I almost want to say it's a housekeeping item. We do our budgets on a biannual basis, and every year in the midyear, we have to make adjustments based upon reality, and this is what we're doing with this one. So unlike the other one, I do hope it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood.
Ditto.
I applaud your brevity. Counsel, anyone else? No, gotta wait. Okay, Mr. Elwood.
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge the testimony tonight, which I appreciate, especially members of the public coming and expressing their opinion and point of view. And I think one salient point that just struck me is is the idea that what we're trying to process here, it goes through committees. We have a lot of discussion on it that happens behind the scenes, and it is, for lack of a better reference, it could look like Chinese, right? And so what we need to do as a city body is do more on our transparency part, and I would argue that this particular council, this particular city has been very transparent in a lot of what we do, and it doesn't seem that way sometimes because we do make decisions in in the back room, so to speak, because it's a committee meeting. It's hard for people to come here during the day, take time off their work to listen to what's going on. There's a lot of material here that you have to read. There's a lot of minutia and detail. Thankfully, our new finance director has done an excellent job and really making it very specific. So so what I'm putting forward to this body in the new year is that we have another town, we create a town hall session or something like that where we invite the members of the public twice over the course of next year. One early in maybe Q one, Q two-ish, one Q three or fourth quarter-ish, where we actually look at the beginning budget. We look at the dollars coming in, and we we open it up to the public, allow public to actually explore. We work with staff to really understand, help folks that want to show up, understand where the dollars are coming from, what it is that we're trying to do, how they're earmarked, how we are very responsible in our spending, how we are very transparent in everything that we do. And then a second time later in the year to see how those dollars move, see how the needle is moving along the way. We can always do better when it comes to transparency and accountability. I recognize after listening to testimony that that is one area that we could actually take better, better opportunity to open the books, as they say, in a more public format, as opposed to just a committee meeting or in a council dynamic where you really don't have time to digest the material. You hear a couple of words, the words you understand, like property tax, and next thing you know, I'm concerned as well. But when you really start digging into the weeds and really understand it a little bit better, then you can make a better judgment on how this particular body is spending the dollars of the citizens North Bend and how we try really hard to keep our money here in our community as opposed to going to King County and elsewhere. They make it hard for us to do it, but we have an excellent crack staff that allows us making those decisions a lot easier. So I'll put that forward to our mayor-elect to get that on our agenda next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments, although I'm going to retract my previous compliment. Mr. Jocelyn.
I hope to be brief. It's a it's a small cleanup on aisle seven moment. The council member Erwood said, make decisions in the back room, and then went on to say, in committee during the day, and I just want to be very clear, we go into executive session. We are not allowed and we do not make decisions or take decisions in an executive session. What he was referencing is that we do have a committee structure in this town. Committee meetings are public. They're open to the public. People are welcome to attend, so we're not doing anything in a back room that isn't transparent and open, and you would certainly affirm that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three five and ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four mid biennial budget modification and the twenty twenty-four salary schedule as a second and final reading. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item number seven on your agenda. This is A B twenty-three dash one three six. This is a resolution adopting the six-year capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. Mr. Regos?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Page sixty-seven in your packet, moving away from taxes and moving towards our all our projects. So this is exciting stuff for me. Our capital improvement plan has many projects, including sewer, water, parks, storm drainage, roads, pavement management, all that good stuff, all that infrastructure in the city. So we have discussed the CIP at a couple of transportation and public works committee meetings during the last several months. It has been to the Parks Commission. These projects are come from a variety of sources, including our six-year TIP and just water system plan, our sanitary sewer system plan, et cetera. This is a planning document. It does not lock us into these projects, but it gives us an idea of the forecast, and we have a hundred and thirty million dollars worth of projects over the next six years. Many of those are grant funded, approximately half of that money is grant funded. By having these projects on the CIP list, it allows us to apply for grants from the state, from Puget Sound Regional Council, from state T I B, from King County Conservation Futures, and many other places where grants are available. So happy to answer any questions if necessary. We've been over this a couple of times. There's a nice map in the packet. There's project narratives of each project, and we have the actual spreadsheets on eleven inch by seventeen inch, a couple of pages that describe those projects, and that's it.
Thank you. I think the only thing you overlooked is that this is the second reading. It's also been before counsel as a whole previously.
Correct.
Any clarifying questions for Mr. Regos before I go to public comment? Ms. Miller.
Mark, just for point of clarification, you mentioned the numbers grant, and you said something about a large number. I want you to repeat that number if you don't mind, and you said half of that monies was, what is that number is my point?
Yeah, it's nearly half of the hundred and thirty million dollars. It's slightly less, but there's a lot of expected grants out there.
I think that's an important number for the public to really understand what's really going on here. We have a fantastic gentleman in our staff who does our grants for us, and therefore we have opportunities grow from that, so it's an important moment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to expand on that just a touch, too, as we have funding sources from our transportation impact fees from general facility charges, and so these are impact fees that the city charges developers for their projects here. So there's a lot of revenue from all sorts of sources to pay for these projects.
Thanks for clarification.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Seeing none.
I would like to make a motion.
We're not ready for motions yet. But I'm ready for you. We're going to first move to public comment. If you are a member of the public and wish to comment on this item, move forward to the podium, or if you're online, you can indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Is anyone here in chambers who should speak?
I have a question. Robin Balcom, two forty-six Old Alley, North Bend. So when you mentioned the grant money and then all of the projects, are any of these projects pending grant money? I mean, that's, or is, or will the, are these in the budget, and then we're hoping to get grant money?
I think, Mr. Regos, I think that would be one that is reasonable to answer to the public.
Yeah, it's, there's a reasonable expectation that we'll get some of these grants, but they are future grants. We don't have money in hand.
So do the projects happen no matter what, or do the projects await the grant coming?
Projects await the grant in many cases.
Thank you.
Thank you. And and yes, I'm getting a couple of looks from staff. We generally do not do exchanges, but this is, that was a reasonable. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Transportation and Public Works, so Ms. Miller.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one three six, a resolution adopting the city's twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine six-year capital improvement plan as a second and final reading.
Thank you. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Ms. Miller, would you like to speak to it?
I'll try to be as brief as possible. I'm always excited about what we can do with our infrastructure and prove the quality of life in our town. So the map, if the public wants to take a look at that in their, in your leisure, showcases a abundant projects that are very exciting for me, for one to be looking forward to. So just want to say I fully support this passing and going forward into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Sure, I'll be supporting this tonight as well. I think most of us probably got some emails from Salal about some of the things on here, and I'll touch on one, section three, number four, the Water Main Extension and outgoing towards Truck Town. I support the this tonight. Obviously, I do also believe that there may be some economies of scale, maybe, or something along those lines, if we work together with Salal. And I hope that is something we'll consider as we move forward. I think there are other ways to look at this as well. I will leave that to the new administration, the new council, but I just want to draw attention to it that hopefully there'll be some conversations with Salal. We can partner up and maybe work together to find some ways to save a little money on that, and I'll leave it at that tonight.
Thank you. Now Mr. Jocelyn.
I want to acknowledge the quality of the cartography and thank the staff cartographer. I know that they're busy and overloaded trying to keep up with ongoing changes and so on and so forth, but having looked at a number of maps throughout my tenure and prior, this is the nicest representation and most readable of these projects that I have yet seen. Well done. Thank you.
Very much. Ms. Cullen.
I would like a motion to strike U dash zero four five from the CIP narrative attached to the resolution. This is about bringing water for the National Guard. And that's the motion I would like to propose.
A motion to, is there a second? I have a second. Motion fails for lack of a second. Thank you.
I have a second motion to move items T dash zero three four, T dash zero zero one, and T dash zero five two to be moved up on the CPI list. This is related to this are items number eleven, twenty-two, and number thirty-one. Two of them are sidewalk projects for the east side of town that would help our Twin Fall Middle School is one of them, and also one fortieth going to North Bend Way. And the third one is the Park Street making it wider, making more turns that way.
Okay, so so first, I mean, just make sure we've got the motion here before we go to it. We have a motion that reads to move items T zero three four, T zero zero one, and T zero five two to number eight, nine, and ten respectively in the transportation section of the capital improvement plan. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's our point of information. Is it a motion or an amendment to the motion that's before us? Don't we have a motion on the floor?
It would be an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is to amend the previous motion. All right, and I'm I'm kind of pausing here since I'm sure that a few council members are scrambling to find the item numbers.
Yes, would you mind repeating the item numbers, please?
Item numbers zero three four. These are all T items, T items. Zero three four, zero zero one, and zero five two.
I'm not seeing zero zero one.
That's top on seventy-three. It's number twenty-two.
Yeah.
Just to keep us in appropriate order. Could I get a second just so that we consider the amendment?
Second.
Thank you. And I'll pause for you to find them.
Somebody direct me to the right page. The other thing that I have an issue with is that I can't rotate my PDF, so I'm going to have So I'm gonna have hopefully hold it in the right way here. Which page?
You should be able to rotate, but I can't.
So page seventy-three is T dash zero zero one. It's the southeast one fortieth street sidewalk on the north side. East Eagles next place southeast to Twin Fall Middle School.
Number twenty-two, okay. And you want to swap that out with number eight? Can I ask a clarifying question maybe while we're taking a look at this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Regus, um, is there any reason for the order that we currently have? Is there anything with grant funding or timing or staff time that puts these in this order? And is there a problem if we move them?
Uh, great question. So yeah, the first number is the priority of the project and the second number is just the internal identification. So you know, we can only do so many projects at once, right? We don't have, we only have so many resources. I've got some great engineers and we've got some money. And typically we'll look at the top ten projects. We'll be actively working on those, or they might be in construction or in feasibility. Whereas some of the numbers down as you get towards thirty-nine and even, you know, twenty-five through thirty-nine, we're just not as active. They're kind of out there four or five years away. Um, so um, these projects that council member Colin has brought up are projects priorities eleven, twenty-two and thirty-one. And so eleven is coming up pretty soon. Um, twenty-two is still out there a few years and thirty-one is still out there a few years. So I think the the motion being made is to move those projects up to eight, nine and ten. That's what I've heard. So that just bumps everything down three spots is what the motion is. And our current projects, eight, nine and ten, are northwest eighth street widening between North Bend Way and Bendigo Boulevard. Um, so that is a active project that we're currently designing. The downtown parking lot garage, um, that is not a project that we're currently working on, but a lot of people ask about. And a lot of people are interested in seeing more parking downtown. Um, I have no issues at all with that bumping down. Um, and then project number ten, Orchard Drive Sidewalk. That's a project um, near the Si View Metropolitan Park District. And we've started the design on that project. We've done some surveying. We've met with property owners. And so that is an active project. So by moving these three projects up, then I'll be focusing a little bit more on these three um, compared to the other ones.
Sure, you guys in summary, I'm hearing two are in design, one is not.
Correct.
I wanted to also ask, is this, does this not work similar to the transportation, the tip? In that some of these are are will move around depending on grant.
Yeah, yeah, they move every year and it just depends on our T P W committee. We usually look at them a couple of times in the spring. And we adopt our six-year T I P every year in June. So um, it's a living and breathing document. So um, I have no issues making a change tonight. Um, I have no issues making a change next spring either. So doesn't, it doesn't matter too much to me.
Mr. Elwood.
And I would just add, one of the items that you would like to move was actually a citizen-led initiative where members of that community got together, signed petitions to get it on the list, and they've been waiting three to five years for it to get in the design stage. So so I'm not going to support this uh, your your motion. Just because we're in design standards and and for that reason. Thank you.
I would like to add, the reason that I asked for these projects to be moved forward is I feel ignored on the east side of town. We have a growing community out there. The Dahlgren property is moving along. They're going to be moving in and to have safe sidewalks for our east side of town neighborhoods to get to the new park and to North Bend Way would be very helpful and not make us feel so neglected as the rest of the town.
Thank you.
I do think they need safe sidewalks as well, just given where we're at in this project process, given the fact that one of the initiatives was a citizen-led initiative. Signatures and petitions put it on here and they've been waiting. Uh, that's why I almost support it, but I want to back up what you're saying. They need to have sidewalks and safe travel on the other end of town. That's not good that we're neglected. So I do support that perception. Thank you.
Sir Jocelyn.
Yeah, I'll be voting against the amendment simply. It's it's late in the process. There will be opportunities in future. This is fungible and tangible and based on funding and nothing's locked in in terms of priority. And there's every opportunity going forward for the for these interests, I think, to be brought forward and expressed in future and hopefully gain priority. I don't disagree with any of it other than to at this point be moving things down the list at such short notice. I can't frankly, you know, fully appreciate some of the trade-offs that are being asked.
Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, I I will be voting against as well, but I do recommend that we come back to this in the spring so that we can do this in a little more timely manner. Um, doing it on the fly tonight. Um, it's a little difficult, I think, for all of us to take in, especially when some things are reactive and in the planning stages. I don't think this is a reflection on the request of those projects. I think they may be well worth looking at moving vote uh, higher up in the list. And I also do understand your concern about your side of town because, yeah. It does sometimes seem a little unbalanced. I would strongly recommend that we come back to this. I won't be here, but the rest of you in the spring. And um, see if we can make these adjustments so that when this comes to us in the fall, it's already in order in the document and Mr. Regos has time to work on that and make the adjustments necessary.
Well, I get to be short now because I, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, pardon me.
Ms. Miller.
My my pardon. Um, I'm gonna just echo exactly what you just said. You spoke eloquently for what I feel. So we'll be looking into this.
Mr. Elwood.
Uh, as I understand it, there's a movement afoot to create a city council emeritus seat um, in which Mr. Rosen might have to be called upon to at least high five or tag team in and out of a decision-making. And so I I I hope that this is one where the council member emeritus seat uh, can weigh in on next year. Thank you.
Uh, there's a lot of places I could go with that one. Mr. God help.
Does that mean that he gets all the work we don't want to do?
That's one of the places I was thinking of going with that. Okay, I think we've exhausted this uh, call for the vote. Uh, this is on a motion to amend uh, to move items T zero three four zero zero one and zero five two to eight, nine and ten respectively in the transportation section of the capital improvement plan. Those in favor? Those opposed? Uh, motion fails five to one, Ms. Cohen being the only one in favor. Thank you very much. And we'll move back to the main motion. Uh, motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three six, a resolution adopting the city's two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-nine, six-year capital improvement plan as a second and final reading. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Would you speak? Okay, thank you. Uh, motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you. Um, and thank you for passing that. I I agree with the sentiments that were shared by all council in in regard to the importance of these items. And thankfully, it is a fungible list as we've learned. Next item on your agenda is item number eight, A B twenty-three dash one three seven. This is a motion authorizing amendment to the Republic contract. Mr. Regus.
Thank you. So we are moving over to solid waste, uh, often called garbage um, or recycled or compostable. So um, we have had a contract, the city of North Bend with Republic. We had a seven-year contract and we've approved two two-year time extensions to that contract. So now we are at ten years and nine months of working with um, Republic. That ends in three months. On April first, we will be moving over to recology. So this is a really just a housekeeping agenda bill for the last three months of that contract, which is January, February and March of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, per our contract with Republic, there is a very slight increase in the rate of solid waste and it is indexed. And so it is already contracted. Um, it's on the order of about four percent or so. So this is a small increase for those three months. Um, we'll expect to see a bigger increase in April.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions before I turn to public comment? Mr. Gotham.
One of the things that that does include is the increase in the King County solid waste. So some of this is not necessarily because of that. Some of it is as a King County, we're paying higher tipping rates.
You're correct.
Nothing else? If you're a member of the public and wish to speak about this agenda item, please, if you're here in council chambers, move to the podium. If you're online, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Seeing nobody in chambers moving forward? Do we have anyone online?
No one online wishing to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, this came through your committee?
Did indeed. Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one three seven, approving the rate restructure by King County and authorizing an amendment to the solid waste contract with Republic in a form and content approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Ms. Miller, anything to add?
Uh, I'll be brief as much as I can tonight. Uh, I look at this as a housekeeping item uh, with um, Republic with King County F A C. We we really do have to be addressed by that. So it's something that we have to do and it's going to be short term. So I recommend that approves.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Well, let's talk about this garbage contract the better at this point. So gotta get it going.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Elwood.
I think this is a an interesting one to have tonight, especially given the testimony when we're talking about transparency. As as you've heard, um, the words housekeeping and what that typically means is there's really not much we can do about it. King County is raising the rates. Republic then is going to raise the rates on the consumer. We have to pass this. Now, what we could have done in this particular situation is just put it on the consent agenda and not brought it forward for the public to actually hear what's going to happen. As you heard from Mr. Regos, um, we're going to be taking on a new uh, garbage uh, agency uh, in about three or four months next year, and the rates will go up again. Unfortunately, Republic rates would have gone up as well. So the the rates are going to go up. There's not much we can do about it, but what we can do about it as a council is that we can bring it forward, put it on the agenda. So members of the public can review it and then speak to it at the podium. This is where we are trying to be transparent. Hopefully that's understood. Uh, we try to do this on anything that has that's going to have a cost impact to the residents. We also uh, bring these things forward when we find that our staff is saving money through grants and things like that. We try to demonstrate fiscal responsibility by putting these type of items on the main agenda, especially, you know, even when there's nothing we can do about it. Hopefully, I that point has been impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three seven, proving the rate restructure by King County and authorizing an amendment to the solid waste contract with Republic in a form and content approved by the city attorney. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Item number eight, uh, whoop, on behind. Item number nine on your agenda. A B twenty-three dash one three eight. This is an ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fees schedule regarding solid waste and recycling rates. Mr. Boda, back to you.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a complimentary agenda bill to the previous one the council just voted on. Um, under section three point three point one of the contract, the rates charged for services are scheduled to be adjusted annually on January first, reflect any changes in the Consumer Price Index. Um, in addition to that, uh, there has been an increase in the land tipping fees charged by King County, which council just voted on uh, recently here. Uh, King County has raised their tip fees effectively January first, twenty twenty-four from one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents per ton to one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents per ton. Um, and so consequently, the goal of this is to update the taxes, rates and fee schedule, which is a really transparent document. I think overall the city of North Bend produces that citizens can access. And this will make sure that it's available uh, to the public for their review. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any clarifying questions? Seeing none. You're a member of the public and wish to speak on this item here in council chambers. Please come forward to the podium. You're online. Once again, uh, star nine or enter your name in the chat box. Seeing anybody here in chambers moving forward? Do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. And this one came through F and A, Mr. God Health.
It's busy night tonight for F and A. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one thirty-eight, an ordinance increasing solid waste and recycling rate rates and amending the tax rates and fee schedules as a first and final reading.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Elwood, Mr. God Health. Anything to add?
I think that my counterpart, Mr. Elwood, uh, made the point that uh, we brought this in finance and it was important for us to bring it forward. Um, is it something getting approved from finance? It is unfortunately housekeeping from our perspective, because we don't have a lot of uh, saying in saying no to King County on the tipping rates. Um, and I would suspect that you'll see increases over the next couple of years based upon what we're going to see. So it's important for the citizens to understand that we do our best to hold costs down. Um, but sometimes we don't have the input on this, and this is another one of those items uh, that we don't. So it's really kind of a housekeeping. So thank you. I
Thank you. Mr. Elwood, anything to add?
Nada.
Counsel, anyone else? Seeing none. The motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three eight, an ordinance increasing the solid waste and recycling rates and amending the taxes, rates and fee schedule as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Item ten on your agenda. A B twenty-three dash one three nine. This is a motion authorizing a contract for city attorney services. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mayor and counsel. As you know, we went through an extensive request for proposals, uh, process and interview. And uh, pleased to say that Kenyon Deason came out on top. And of course, what we needed to do is to go ahead and and uh, put that in a contract form and to designate the city attorney within that uh, contract. And that's what we're doing in this particular action. I'd be happy to answer any um, uh, any questions. We had some assistance from a former legal expert here and a former city administrator to help us with the contract. And we had some good collaboration with Kenyon Deason. And it is approved as to form by the city attorney as well. So we're ready for action.
We're very pleased that city attorney approved the city attorney's contract. Uh, clarifying questions? Seeing none. To the public, if you would like to comment on this agenda item, please move to the podium or indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Once again, seeing nobody rushing to the podium here in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
No one online at this time wishing to speak.
Thank you. Why, golly, Mr. God help. You're a star tonight.
So I don't know if that's good or bad. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash one thirty-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kenyon Deason P L L C for the city attorney services.
Second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Jocelyn. Mr. God help, anything?
I I think it should pass. I just don't know if it's a conflict of interest to have the city attorney approve the city attorney's contract, but you know, it is what it is.
Mr. Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, simply want to speak on Ms. Rosenberg's behalf. I think the level of service has increased noticeably and uh, appreciate the attention, the detail keeping us uh, on task and out of trouble. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, I I know the contract is with your firm, but I'd like to let you know I feel much better knowing that you are our city attorney. You've done a phenomenal job in the short time you've been here. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I think we're all more comfortable working, knowing that the firm has someone like you that we can work with. So great job and we look forward to continuing that.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
I'd like to echo um, my colleague's words. Uh, it's been fantastic since you came on board. Um, I'm really glad that you came on board. And I'm looking forward to the future. The other piece of it too, um, we've been with Kenyon Deason for quite some time. Um, there there's legacy knowledge there. There's history. There's a working relationship. And so I think it's fantastic that we're getting fresh perspective from an organization that we've grown to trust and that we've gone through a lot with. So I do hope this pass. I I don't see why it wouldn't, but just wanted to put the words out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, counsel, I I do, I'm going to comment on this one since um, obviously the city attorney is uh, near dear to the to the heart of uh, a mayor. Um, I appreciate also the 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 comments that you're making for the firm and and for Kendra. I likewise have been really, really um, pleased with uh, the way that she is. I likewise have been really, really um pleased with uh the way that she is engaged uh since she came on as the city attorney um and done a fantastic job and continued that. I did have a conversation recently with uh Mike Kenyon about uh overall services, and as Mr. Elwood indicated, firm is thirty-plus years uh in service to the city and uh very pleased that uh we're able to continue that. Just as a reminder, I know counsel is well aware of this, since we did uh discuss this uh previously, but the we did do an extensive search, I think we interviewed five firms in all. Uh, we narrowed that to three. Um, we had a, an, a very objective, um, uh. There's a special educational term for it, but I'll call it a matrix, an evaluation tool that was used for rating. And uh, and Kenyon Deason came out very high in that regard. We went through several rounds of interviews uh following that, and uh, and they again came out shining. Um, both our current city attorney as well as the new managing partner and answers to questions that we had, and so I'm very pleased with the outcome here. With that, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty-three dash one three nine, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kenyon Deason P L L C for city attorney services. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, counsel, with that, as, as a reminder, I let you know we were going to reverse the order of the two items, we're going to delay action on uh item number eleven. And we will um first move to mayor, council, administrator concerns and initiatives, and then we'll move into executive session. Mr. God Health.
Yeah, I'm going to echo some of the same thoughts I, I've echoed, uh, we, it's getting dark earlier. Um, we're seeing a lot of people walking out on the streets and it's really hard to see them. Um, and unfortunately, recently, we did have uh a death here from a car hitting a pedestrian, so I'm going to push, what I keep pushing is, please, when you're out there driving, um, this is a resident, you know, most of this area, people walk around. Please be careful, please watch out, please monitor your speeds so that we don't see that happen again. Um, it's terrible when it happens, and hopefully we won't, and hopefully we'll take a look at uh how we light some areas to make it, but I really want to stress that to the public that it's really important for you guys to watch that, and you know, when people are kind of starting to walk in, I've been guilty myself, sometimes things pop up with these lights, the, that come up in the middle of it and you don't hit it, but uh, you don't, you see them at almost the last minute, but take a little slower time, take a couple more minutes to get to the freeway, and hopefully every video get home at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for bringing that up. I echo everything that you say. Uh, tonight, for example, I witnessed a couple coming out with groceries and crossing through the a roundabout. It's not the roundabout's fault, like Mark suggested, but be, be very aware of what you wear, if you're wearing dark clothing, um, please be careful, take notice, uh, people are very busy, the the uh weather has changed and uh we're getting into the fun holiday season, so there's a lot of excitement out there, but take that extra minute and please, please be highly vigilant as you're out and about town. And uh happy Thanksgiving to one and all, hope you are safe, happy and enjoy your uh time together. Thank you.
Mr. Elwood?
It's funny, we're all on the same theme. Um, first of all, I'd like to express my condolences to the family um that, that lost a loved one due to an accident, unfortunately. Um, it is something that we need to draw better attention to. Um, there's been items um we put forward on the city dockets, uh, the decision cards, for example, to maybe increase lighting, this will be initiative, I think all of us will take on next year. Um, even myself, uh, crossing the streets, I'll count four or five cars as I'm standing with, they're waiting to cross and they don't let me go, which, you know, it's their prerogative, but we should need to stop and look out for one another. We're not, we shouldn't be in that much of a hurry in our beautiful small town that, that we can't wait for somebody to cross the street, especially when it's dark, I mean, it's, it's incredibly dangerous. And unfortunately, we have a real world example of how dangerous it can be. Um, so definitely we'll be taking this up next year, uh, once we get our new council on board, but please be careful out there, both as driver and as pedestrian. Um, it, it works both ways on that, so just be mindful, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, I'll echo the Thanksgiving theme and just briefly state that I am thankful to work with uh the people up here and to be able to act on behalf of and serve this city and the people who live here and thankful for uh one of the best city staffs, I think, in the state. Uh, from my experience, uh, it's, they're on board, they're ready to go, and it's been rough, COVID took, I mean, lots of programs are still just not coming back, and the staff of this city is one of them, uh, and for that I am thankful.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
I'll echo that, Mr. Jocelyn, I agree, we have incredible staff that we are, I think, always thankful for it. And I'll thank you again for everything you guys do. Um, street safety, yeah, uh, Mary, I think you touched on a little bit. Pedestrians certainly have the right of way, but help us see you. I mean, I, I think we've all, if we're being honest, have driven down the street at night and have had a hard time seeing somebody. Anything you can do, especially with your children, get them dressed in something bright. Um, if they're riding their bikes at night, please make sure they're lit up like the Fourth of July. Um, let's all, as I think Brendan, as you said, let's all help each other, because we don't ever want to see anything like this again. And certainly, just slow down, but let's work together, find some solutions, and uh I think lighting is, is a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
I just want to say, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy this time with your friends and family and be safe out there. If you are drinking, maybe don't drive, but have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, anything for the administration?
Nothing for this evening, I think we have a full evening yet.
Thank you. Yeah, we do indeed. Uh, and with it, so just a very few notes uh for the public to remind her, city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, also, the annual holidays event will be held Saturday, December second from five to eight P M. In downtown North Bend, the event features the tree lighting ceremony, fireside samours, hot cocoa, live entertainment, and pictures with Santa. For more information, please visit the news section of the city website. And then counsel, as a reminder, we will be canceling next week's uh work study schedule for November twenty-eighth. And I'll just echo uh my, my, my staff, uh, most awesome in the state by far. I appreciate counsel calling that out as well. Um, it's been a, a hard road, but I think we've uh, uh, arrived. Uh, we've got a great functioning unit and uh, and I'm thankful for that. I'm also well known, uh, I'm, I'm sure this will be a shock to many of you that uh holidays aren't really my thing. However, Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday of the year. And I'm going to be particularly enjoying this one, and I'll just leave it at that. With that, executive session, we are going to move now to executive session regarding collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one four zero four. We expect to be approximately fifteen minutes. There will be no action following that agenda item, we will come back into regular session. Thank you. You want me to really? All right, we are back in regular session here, we're moving to item number eleven on the agenda, this is A B dash uh twenty-three dash one forty. Counsel vacancy and appointment. Uh, let me get to my notes here. So um a- as you recall, we um had a session last uh week, last, last regular council meeting. Interviewed a number of applicants, uh, spent some time in executive session and came out and with a determination to continue to tonight. So tonight, city council vacancy applicant interview and appointment process consists of the following. Applicants will be called to the podium in the following order, Harold Tramalata and then Sam White. Each applicant will be asked one question from each council member, if they so choose. Applicants will have two minutes to answer each question. After both applicants have been interviewed, council will enter into executive session per R C W forty-two dash thirty one ten one H to discuss the applicant's qualifications. Counsel will return to the council meeting, and a motion may be made to appoint an applicant or council may choose to continue the process for further deliberation or to solicit more applicants. If an applicant is appointed to position four, an oath of office will be administered by the mayor, and newly appointed council member will immediately join the council. With that, we'll invite Mr. Tramalata to the podium.
Hello?
Counsel, I'm going to go in order of seniority, I believe that's the method that I used last time. Yes, Mr. Elwood. That's a, a great question, we did not employ that, but that sounds like a reasonable choice. Mr. What, yes, thank you, appreciate. Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, so definitely, um, so a couple of things, actually, we just talked about this in planning commission with regard to the economic development element is understanding your commercial zones and understanding um the gross receipts and basically the data that derives those commercials on, so like to see an analysis of gross receipts, sales per acre, so to speak, of each commercial zone, what the zoning is and, and kind of regionalized within the town and, and kind of the results of that specific zoning, and, and the reason I bring that up for a small business owner is as your neighboring tenants or vacant land, whatever it might be, uh, is being considered for development, we need to better understand, how can we not only help the, this individual who wants to invest in our city with their development, but what does it do to the neighboring town, whether it's downtown historic or down by truck town? How will that have an exponential effect on our small businesses, um, and not specifically just that, that specific uh project uh, uh, development? So, uh, a- and then also infrastructure, infrastructure is incredibly important. Uh, in my previous, or the, the early half of my career, uh, I specifically worked with small and medium sized businesses. Startup costs are immensely uh burdening on these uh small businesses. Um, not only rent, but uh upfront costs, inventory, whatever you're trying to sell. Uh, and a lot of these people are putting their life savings into this, right? It's a labor of love a lot of times for a small business. So whether that infrastructure investment can be sidewalks, pathways, uh, making sure that they have proper egress for customers to access them signage, uh, understanding what that means from a downtown commercial aspect and also all the way to the highway, how can we get visitors to know about their business as they come into our town, not, not just as they find like a treasure hunt in, in this little gem in our town? So stuff like that, from an infrastructure perspective, um, I think we need to take a, a broad approach to really understand, how can we help our small businesses from the governing body up there?
Thank you. Mr. God Health.
You had a good question last uh time, so I was thinking about examples, so I'm somewhat prepared for this. Uh, so I actually had a, a, about ten years ago, I represented a public part, a private public partnership uh that wanted to do a development and a lease in a historic portion uh of the city, and uh we had my interests were with the private public partnership, we also had funding of an international government, so it was highly complicated on, on their side. But we had to deal with a historical society, we had to deal with the local city, county, uh, Department of Transportation, uh, because this was on a waterway, so there was ferries and what have you. Um, and everybody wanted something out of this deal. It was not, uh, it was not easy, it wasn't a tr- a traditional sort of tenant landlord relationship. Everybody want, had skin in the game, everyone felt like they had something to lose. Um, and we brought the way we got to the end of this was bring subject, subject, subject matter experts from everywhere. It was fully collabora- collaborative, driven by my team to bring in engineers, consultants, lawyers, uh, what have you, and land use council to understand our development was going to affect everybody, and how did we make this a win-win? Um, the, 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 the way this ended result was that it was um a mission statement for the city, that, that, what this developer was bringing, it, it it brought, education was the, the key. Um, and so we brought, we helped each of these entities understand why they were going to be better off because of this development. Um, very complicated. Uh, but the end result launched about eighteen months later along, along project, project, but um, but also on that front, in the middle of the project, because it was an international government, the budget was passed for this project at seventy-five percent what it needed to be. So in the middle of project, we effectively had a twenty-five percent haircut, and we had these competing interests now, like we had agreed to this deal.
Surprise.
We no longer can afford it, so we run in those consultants, we value engineered the deal, and we were still able to deliver the project at the end of the day.
Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, first, let me say, this kind of process of the candidate selection, um, is not my favorite. Um, we're told that we can only ask one or two questions to interview somebody that um is stepping up to do an important role for our community, and from those few questions, we're supposed to make a determination. Um, with that in mind, my next question is, is, is kind of a big one. Um, and it prompted me to create this one, it's a little bit more complex, uh, so you may need a little bit of time to think about it. And this is a fa- this is a hypothetical question situation, okay? The administration hired consultants to conduct research on the housing needs of North Bend, which the city council previously had approved budget for. According to the administration, the data from the research suggests that North Bend needs at least one thousand five hundred more market rate housing units within the next three to five years to accommodate people who want to move to our community. To achieve this, the staff tells council, we must move quickly to do these five things. One, to increase height restrictions to allow taller residential buildings. Two, expand sewer into all areas currently on septic and require property owners to connect to it once the expansion is complete. Three, change zoning to allow all single-family home properties to build, to be able to build additional dwelling units such as duplexes and quadplexes. Four, start allocating public open space throughout the town to make room for condos, townhomes and other multi-housing units. And five, change zoning down all major roadways and within the E P areas to allow for neighborhood businesses to be built. In other words, buildings with shops downstairs and apartments above like the Phoenix Plaza. Being proactive because of this urgency, the mayor had staff send a letter to all property owners who might be impacted by these changes. Since none of the property owners have responded to the letter, the mayor informs council that the residents are supportive of these changes and will prepare agenda bills to be presented at the next full council meeting to adopt. How would you proceed?
Two minutes.
Okay, uh, so, you know, high level, just analyzing the question as a whole, I think that the the job of council in that role is to make sure not only do they fully understand opportunity cost, whether it's sewer, height, what have you, um, or any of those examples that you mentioned about a, a change, so to speak. You need to understand the community, the opportunity cost, and then you need to make sure that you're educating the electorate on that opportunity cost, right? Um, personally, letters to the community, I don't think cuts the mustard in twenty twenty-three. I think that the community is looking for a proactive council. Um, some ideas that we threw out during uh my general election campaign was, how can we get council maybe coordinate with HOAs around the area, since we have so many of them, and try to be, whether it's once a year, twice a year, engage, whether it's a few of, of council, maybe it's the entire council, to really go to the public and get those answers out, right? I don't think, um, knowing how hard it is to, to get somebody to vote for you, getting them to respond to a letter, uh, unless they're directly affected in that area, is probably very difficult, and I think response rate would be incredibly low. Um, I also think you need to make sure that we're understanding uh and being attuned. Understanding uh, and being attuned to the needs of the community, the folks that moved here, who have lived here. And not necessarily the community we are looking to bring in. Um, now I think there's a healthy balance in that conversation. But the uh, going back to opportunity costs, when you, when you agree to a height variance, which is something I deal with all the time professionally. There are individuals that move to this community, generational uh, families that are going to be impacted, whether it's a view. Uh, whether it's something sentimental across the street that they grew up with. Um, not to say that. That that's the reason to not do the project, but I think communication messaging and frankly optics matter, uh, especially in a town of.
Need to summarize.
Uh, eight thousand or or where we're at. So um, I think the opportunity cost is 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 the best part of that answer uh, for me is. Understanding it from the council position and then secondarily delivering that uh, information to the electorate and making sure they understand.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm taking a different tact, so uh, relax, guys. Balancing. Take a breath. Balancing family commitments with civic responsibilities can be challenging. How do you plan to manage your time effectively to fulfill your duties as council member while maintaining a healthy work-life balance?
Yeah, that's a great question and one that was really, uh, one that I battled before filing for the general election and one that frankly I. I battled even before applying for this after after the general. Uh, I think first and foremost. Uh, I have a very, very strong uh, family unit, my 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 wife and kids. Uh. They have been the backbone of this uh, effort and uh, fully supported me and and have pushed me forward. So without that, I think. Uh, I would have major second guesses. As for the day to day, um, kind of X's and O's and blocking and tackling, uh. I I I do live on conferences, probably eight or ten a day. Uh, very. Broad across the country and uh, frankly, the world. Um, I'm. Very good at scheduling my own time from that perspective, uh, and prioritizing where needed. So um. I think my heart and soul is is to help this community and and I don't see an issue with me uh, prioritizing that. Also, I'm I'm currently on planning commission. So I I understand kind of where the 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 pushes are. Obviously, I'm not on council and dealing day to day, but I understand some of the challenges you're facing, right? And the priorities that that you'll be facing ongoing in in twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, so um, hopefully that answers uh, appropriately.
Thank you. Ms. Colin?
My question is, we've been getting some positive feedback, oh, sorry. From business owners and other community members. My question to you is, how are you going to be able to advocate for the different? Communities in North Bend? Will you be able to make unpopular decisions for the good of the community as a whole? And please give me an example.
Yeah, I mean, that is by far uh, probably the biggest challenge I would imagine in that role at at council, right? You it, not every decision is going to make everyone happy. I think for me, the my focus has always been small businesses and the crux of a a thriving local economy. I don't think you can have any other amenity or any other uh, successful. Part of your community without a strong local economy. Everything funnels out of a strong local economy, jobs, infrastructure. Monies for public works, public safety, fire, uh, you name it, arguably health, uh, you know. I think the data across the country shows you that, that economies that struggle, struggle with that, uh, environmental health, conservation, sustainability. All those things that may fall within other communities outside of the, you know, quote unquote, small businesses will be affected. If we don't have a strong local economy. And so that's been my focus uh, since day one. Um, I I think. There's a trickle down effect from that. So if we can maintain and and argue, and I would say stimulate further that local economy, I think. The rest of those communities thrive as well, maybe downstream, maybe not immediately, but they will.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Uh, thank you for coming before us and your time, of course. Uh, what if any differences do you see in the role of the private sector and the public sector? In supporting our city and its residents?
So first and foremost, I think private sector is where the advancements and and innovation occur. Uh, I think. The public sector's role is to provide a pathway to that and and kind of going back to what I mentioned earlier about infrastructure. Infra- infrastructure doesn't sell more hamburgers, it doesn't sell more trinkets, it doesn't sell more uh, T-bones, steaks. But it allows sort of the experts in that field or the folks that are investing their money to have a successful business downstream. Um, everything else along that side, whether it's innovation and sustainability or tackling other bigger. Uh, topics across the board, in my personal opinion, happens in the private sector. And if you have a. A a local governing body that is supplying the infrastructure to allow that investment. That's when the two marry together and you have a successful thriving economy.
Okay, council?
Does anybody have any follow-up questions that they would like to ask?
Or we.
One more.
The next, or we move to the next candidate. Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, uh, for being up here and going through this process. Um. There has been some uh, commentary put together with your background and and being commercial developer. Um, some of those concerns that have been expressed, at least to me, is where you sit on residential development and how are you going to. Uh, work through that, being that you're a developer. Would would you, how would you respond? To somebody who would express that concern, the the justic- juxtaposition between residential development and commercial development?
Right, and to do, to be clear with a question, the inference is uh, too much residential development?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, um. Well, and I think I I mentioned this in the in the last part of the the last interview last week as well, a little bit is. Residential development, whether it, whether you feel like we're adequate or too far along. Has to fall, ha- what has to follow is commercial development, right? The residential development raises a level of service requirement in your community. Even by surely by the numbers, but also by the types of people you bring into that community. You're you're, my community in Tanner Falls is a great example. We are the quintessential melting pot of North Bend, people from out of state, out of region. Uh, actually, I think we have a couple from other countries as well. Um, and so you you've got people coming from other places that have experienced the world of local government in very different ways. Um, and so they're gonna have concerns, interest, demands that are gonna be different than maybe. Ten years ago in North Bend. And so for the lo- for the local body to to govern accordingly. Um, you need a strong commercial development behind that. You need to provide not only the amenities to these families that are moving in here. But also a strong tax base to make sure, uh, you know, some of the things you talked about tonight, uh, previously before this interview. That you have a tax base to pay the bills and and supply the public works and the the infrastructure that you would need to uh, support residential development. Um, that you've that you've already had. Um, as for, you know, the concern. Uh, my concern in the near term uh, is is not so much of the resident residential. I think we have a good amount. I think we're probably missing that missing middle, that affordability aspect. And I think that's something that we talked about quite a bit with. Folks during our general uh, election campaign is how do we supply that affordable aspect for the folks that are currently here or getting priced out one way or the the other? Um, but once again, I'm I I truly believe the commercial development has to happen in order for that to be sustainable.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, um, kind of a follow-on, follow-up question to yours, Heather. Um, let me give you a. A specific hypothetical, we'll call it. Let's say, um, there is a. Business owner owns some property and wants to develop some convenience stores or something like that in an area near residential neighbors, neighborhood. And the residents obviously are opposed to. There's financial gain for the city having, growing the tax base, but the residents who live there are adamantly opposed. How would you approach something like that? How would you balance those two competing groups?
Yep, so also something I deal with quite often. Um. So I'd say first, the underlying land zoning, right? You'd have to uh, assume that's appropriate. If there's a variance or CUP involved, I think that's where. You take real seriously those concerns of 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 the public, right? Because now you're asking for something outside of the current zoning. If it's currently zoned as such and and they're within the zoning rights to operate there. Then you you take your public concern and you take it seriously, but you un- you help educate the public that. There is a development process in place. We have a planning department, you have planning commission, you have review sessions, you have the process in place. I don't feel like anybody, an individual or a group of people, because they're not happy with something, should be able to hijack the process that we have in place. Property rights works both ways, both for the hu- the homeowner and the commercial owner who invested in that property. Um, I think that's, you know, having gone through the commercial planning process so many times in my career, that's that's a great process. You get to hear all the concerns. And a lot of time, you know, I don't know if the public who's not dealing with this day to day realizes it, but there's a lot of concessions during that process that's made. Um, when you have a good staff that understands the risks and whatnot, and you have um, a a good educated uh, electorate who can come up and and voice concerns. Happens all the times, developers, they change architectural dr- renderings, they change egress and and uh, ingress. Parking elements, height, all those type of things. So I truly believe in the process, right? And so as long as the underlying zoning supports it. Um, I think we have to shepherd them through that process and make sure that their voices are heard. Once again, if it's a, it's a variance or CUP. Then you take a little bit of a heavier hammer to that and understand, look, we're a small rural mountain town and is this making a a a variance or or a change of use? Such a way gonna outweigh kind of changing the landscape of our town?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Ms. Colin.
What policy or legislation would you like to see in North Bend?
Uh, it's, that's a, that's a loaded question. I mean, there's, there's quite a few things. Um. So this is maybe not a. A legislation per se, but it's an effort towards legislation. You know, we've. I live on the east side of town, Truck Town's been a big issue uh, for residents there, that whether it's they, they think it's not activated, there's nothing there. Or it's a safety concern, right? Um, actually, I just came back from a long road trip late at night, came down exit thirty-four and there's trucks lined up all the way along. Um, I would really like to see an effort uh, with Wash Dot to see what we can do to change the landscape of that truck top. Whether it's a exit thirty-five, uh. Uh, additional rest stop specifically for the trucks. I think it's a safety issue, right? So from the legislating body, I think it needs to be taken up seriously from that perspective. Um, I think there's also, you know, we don't have a lot of acres in this town to activate for commercial development and there are acres out there to do that. And I think when you have that amount of impact on one specific exit, that also leads to not only the middle fork, but. Wood River Tanner and Tanner Falls, a good chunk of your growing community. Um, it's stunting some of that growth, to be honest. See, I think there's people that are not going to invest there based on the current landscape. If I was a developer, it's, that's a tough underwriting. There's a lot of things impacting the decision to spend money and develop there. Um, and so I think from a legislative perspective, I think. I'd like to see it come forth as a safety issue and and a partnership with Wash Dot and understand how do we get that fixed? Um, so that not only the truckers have the 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 place that they need, but we can also then provide. Uh, an opportunity for better investment at at exit thirty-four.
Thank you. Anyone who hasn't asked a second question? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Tremolata. Appreciate it.
Stay here or do you want me to?
Counsel, would you like Ms. Tremolata to step out while Mr. Uh, White comes back? Would that, would he equity? Well, you would appreciate it.
Point of, point of order. Yes, I believe that our last session, as candidates finished, they stayed, correct?
Uh, we did. I'm, I'm asking you, and I heard over here a request to.
My preference is to hold things consistent, but I'll defer to. The majority of my colleagues.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Hey, Mr. White, I think you know the routine. We're gonna go through here. We're gonna start with Mr. Rosen.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think we just have to help figure out ways to incentivize. And work with small business owners and try to attract more small business owners and. Guide them through the permitting process and provide support and information for them. So that it makes it easier for them to come to town and secure property and understand what they're getting into. And uh, be able to develop new business quickly and easily. Um, and you know, of course, potentially adding some tax incentives. You know, hopefully would be enticing to small business owners. I mean, these are people who don't have a lot of capital coming in to town to start a new business, so. They need to be, they need to have incentives that they're gonna make, that's gonna make them feel comfortable putting out this money. Help ensure that they can get the business going as quickly and easily as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. God help.
Thank you. Sam, tell me an example of a time when you had to find consensus with two groups with with competing ideas. Can't can't even speak.
Sure, sure. Um, so this happens a lot, um, in my line of work. Currently, I'm I'm working on a project where, um, it's a collaborative project with um, some people who work in coral research. And we are, um, uh, shelfist research researchers. So coral is kind of out of our purview normally. However, we have the expertise in molecular biology, which is messing around with DNA and RNA and proteins. But the coral people are more ecology people. Talking ocean temperatures, currents, uh, bleaching, non-bleaching events. And so, um. Yet we are frequently put in a position where we have to. Essentially, figure out how we're going to approach the problem so that we're using our resources effectively and allowing. The coral researchers to use their resources effectively. Um. Because it's such a uh, dramatic difference in approach to the research and the information that we're seeking. Um. Uh, this specific example, uh, it's hard to come up with one, but I mean, this is something that deal with, you know, weekly in meetings is. Talking to them, them talking to us and trying to figure out how we're going to get this information um, to make sense and not waste everyone's time.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Thank you. Um, this, this process of selecting a candidate is 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 restrictive. Uh, you know, we're allowed to ask just a couple of questions and then make a decision on a role that's really important for our community, community decision makers and so forth. Um, and so that's prompted me to to create kind of this more complex question. Um. Following is a hypothetical situation. Um. The administration hired consultants to conduct research on the housing needs of North Bend. Which the city council previously had budgeted for. According to the administration, the data from the research suggests that North Bend needs at least one thousand five hundred more market rate. Housing units within the next three to five years to accommodate people who want to move to our community. To achieve this, the staff tells council, we must move quickly to do these five things. One, increase height restrictions to allow for taller residential buildings. Two, expand sewer into all areas currently on septic and require property owners to connect to it once the expansion is complete. Three, change zoning to allow single family home properties to build additional dwelling units such as duplexes and quadplexes. Four, start allocating public open space throughout the town to make rooms for condos, townhomes and other multi-housing units. And five, change zoning down all major roadways and within the EP areas. To allow for neighborhood businesses to be built out. That is, buildings with shops downstairs and apartments above it like at the Phoenix Plaza. Being proactive, because this is an urgency, the mayor had staff send a letter to all property owners who might be impacted by these changes. Since none of the property owners have responded to the letter, the mayor informs the council that the residents are supportive of these changes. And will prepare agenda bills to be presented at the next full council meeting for council to adopt. How would you proceed?
And that's, if I was on council, is that, is that?
Yes.
Uh, well, I I certainly. Uh, not agree with the approach. Um. Like I've emphasized over and over again, I'm a data person, information person, and an absence of data is a big concern of mine. Uh, so the fact that there were no respondents to me is not an affirmative, that any of these residents have actually agreed to this sort of thing. But this also ties into, uh, one of the things I would really like to push for if I was on council is improving access. To information and you know, we had, uh, uh, Robin was here earlier. She was talking about how, you know, it all seems like Chinese. And uh, and it's kind of true, that was one of the things that made me wanting to. it's kind of true. That was one of the things that made me want to get the citizens academies. Learn about this stuff because you sit here and these are words and things that nobody's normally exposed to, right? And so having the slides that Mr. Buddha made on the taxes and the low income housing, like that information should be quickly and easily accessible for people to start diving it in and learning about this stuff. So yeah, I would say we need to pause this until we get some feedback from people in this area. Additionally, I would also question whether or not we need to accommodate people that are need these fifteen hundred, you know, housing to accommodate people that might be coming here. Do we actually need to accommodate them? Is that something that, you know, we are required to do as part of the Growth Management Act? I mean, I wouldn't just blindly say, yes, let's start building to accommodate fifteen hundred people that we may or may not need to accommodate.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Sam, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mine's a little different or a lot different, but here we go. Balancing family commitments with civic responsibilities can be challenging. How do you plan to manage your time effectively to fulfill your duties as a council member while maintaining a healthy work-life balance?
Well, I mean, I guess this is where I plug the wonderfulness of my spouse. You know, I mean, we've been together for twenty-eight years. So we rely on each other to balance each other's lives and carry each other when we're needed. So I guess luckily my daughter is not involved in any extracurricular activities. We take her in art class in Isqua one night a week. That's it. So I don't have to run all over town going to soccer and baseball and gymnastics and dance. So as far as family obligations go, that's pretty easy. Additionally, we don't have family in town. We grew up in the Midwest in Illinois. So we don't have any family obligations to deal with other than our own. So we don't have family around to travel to. Additionally, my current job is extremely flexible. I have to give proper to my supervisor. If I need time off, the only thing I do is put Sam out on the Google Calendar. I don't have to ask for permission. I don't give advance notice. You know, after last week, it was pretty late, so I woke up the next morning. Changing my need to being out for the day. And that was it. So I, I have an extreme amount of flexibility and a supportive spouse that would I think make handling any council responsibilities.
Thank you. Ms. Colen.
Thank you for being here. Some of your ideas about the future for our city has caused a lot of concern, especially from some of our business owners. For example, raising the minimum wage in North Bend. What are your ideas on how to keep their businesses successful and thriving?
Yeah, thank, I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, there are a few points I touched on last week and I did not clearly explain that, you know, with the you know, with my idea to propose an increase in minimum wage, it would be specifically targeting large corporate businesses, you know, with thousands of employees, specifically like McDonald's, QOC, Safeway. Corporations that can afford these things and, you know, perpetually underpay workers to maximize their profit. I mean, Kroger and Albertson, you know, who owned QOC and Safeway, I mean, their profits were hundreds of millions, millions of dollars last year. So I think targeting them would be a great benefit. I mean, both of those places employ a number of people in this community. All the fast food restaurants employ a lot of people and I think those people would benefit most from an increase in minimum wage and also not potentially applying that to small business owners. It might have legally, I'm not sure what, you know, the implications are, but maybe we could do a staged increase or set up some sort of system where you know, small business owners wouldn't have to pay the full minimum wage increase as long as they provided benefits to their employees, something along those lines. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jocelyn.
Thank you for your time and energy. What if any differences do you see in the role of the private sector and the public sector in supporting our city and its residents?
And by private sector, do you mean?
Small business.
Small business, sorry. Thanks. Well, I mean, it certainly goes both ways. You know, hopefully, small business owners who will shop, set up shop here, they do so because they want to be part of the community here. They like North Bend, they like the people that they meet and they know that they're going to be working and living amongst their customers and the community. So it's just in, in my mind, it's part of what a community is, is you rely on each other to make things good. And thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes one question each. Did any council member have a follow-up question? A question, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's some concern that in balancing residential and commercial growth and, and there has been some concern that perhaps you lean one way or the other. In thinking about residential and commercial growth, how do you, where do you see? Where do your interests lie and how do those two work together? Or what's your priority between both of those?
Excuse me. I mean, I certainly would prioritize. Sorry, can you just re-ask? I'm sorry.
When thinking about balancing residential growth and commercial growth.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry. So I mean, I would definitely prioritize commercial growth at this point in time. I mean, it's clear that people are unhappy with the residential growth. Additionally, the amount of residential growth that has taken place has sort of resulted in, not a void per se, but the commercial growth hasn't really kept up, I think, with the number of families that have moved into town and unfortunately, the amount of money that is coming to town. I think people that are living here are wanting places to go to eat that are extremely family friendly. I think they want places for entertainment. And, you know, currently, North Bend is lacking a little bit in that area. You know, when I go to birthday parties, I go to Fall City to that jump zone. I can't tell you how many times I've been there since, since moving here. And, you know, kind of same thing on the restaurants and shops front. You know, the outlet mall for me and my family is not an appealing destination. And downtown is fine, but it could be better. And yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen.
Yep, I'll just ask the same hypothetical question to you, just to be consistent. It's kind of a hypothetical, but something that this council may have dealt with in the past and maybe you would deal with in the future. Let's take a business owner on some land and wants to build a convenience store or something like that on the land. The land is near a residential neighborhood. Residents are adamantly opposed. The potential project would obviously generate tax revenue for the city. How would you balance or how would you deal with that conflict between the residents who don't want it and the property owner who feels it's his right to build it?
Yeah. I mean, I would certainly lean more towards the side of the residents. Kind of like, you know, that's kind of been my thing based off of last week is really trying to support people in town. And just because something can be built to make money doesn't mean should. I think there is a lot of talk about generating money and I understand the importance of money. I mean, it's needed. However, I do feel like it's kind of an all-consuming thing. And it would be great to see a little bit more of the support and focus on the people. So, I mean, I would talk to neighborhood, you know, neighborhood residents and, you know, get their feedback and of course, talk to the business owner. And, you know, see if there's a different location that can be potentially utilized. And just try and negotiate that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll ask one second question. So what policy or legislation would you like to see in North Bend?
Well, I, I mean, sounded a bit like a broken record, but you know, I'd like to see enactment of a higher minimum wage here in North Bend, specifically for large corporations to try to get money into people's hands. I, I think it's a relatively easy, quick way to get people more money.
You? Are we done? Hey, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate it. And with interview questions concluding, we are going to move into executive session to evaluate candidate qualifications pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one H. Expect this to be sixty minutes. We'll start there. And we, we do anticipate taking action. With that, we can stop. Hey, congratulations. Um, next item on the agenda is to adjourn, but however, I believe that a few council members wanted to make comment. Mr. God help.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody that participated in this, and it was not an easy decision. And Sam, appreciate your answers and and your excitement to be involved. And what I encourage you is not to take this as a defeat and to, you know, continue to stay involved. Um, we have commissions and communities coming up and and I think you do a good job, and I want to just make sure you understand, we appreciate it and we appreciate everybody that went through this process. It's not an easy process. Um, and maybe sometime in the future we can change a way to make it a little bit more uh, easier or whatever, but want to thank everybody for stepping up and also the council for their debate for this and encourage you to continue to stay involved.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I echo all that you said. Um, first of all, thank you, Errol, for stepping up and the process and the journey and welcome. And Sam, thank you for everything you've done to get yourself here and all the other uh, candidates that were here uh, last week. I want to extend a again, a thank you to them. I don't know who will be listening from that aspect, but that's my, that's my thought. Um, but Sam, I want to see you go forward and it sounds like you're willing to, makes my heart sing, so we'll see you again, I'm sure. And uh, away we go.
Mr. Elwood.
Congratulations, Errol. Uh, look forward to working with you. Uh, this is a good moment. Um, thanks for your commitment. Uh, you've served for a while. You've been on planning commission. Uh, you've been involved and and so congratulations to you in this appointment, for sure. Sam, thank you uh, as well for rising to the occasion when your community needed you. I'm super happy that you're talking about going to the Parks Commission. I'd encourage you, Planning Commission. Uh, Planning Commission does a lot of good found work of thought for how the city works, decision-making, all that other stuff. So any of those commissions, please, please look into them. Um, and also thank you to all the other candidates that had stepped up. I mean, we had an incredible pool of people, unique uh, differences among everybody. Everybody brought something um, interesting and that could be a benefit of the city. And so it was a long, hard process. I absolutely did not like this process, to be honest, and I agree with you that maybe this is something else we take up to make it a little bit more efficient streamlined or however we can change it. But thank you all for all of you who participated in this event, and I'm looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn. Uh, Mr. Rosen.
Sure. Errol, congratulations. Um, best advice I can give you is lean on these folks. You got staff, they're incredible. They will constantly make you look smarter than you are. They've done that for me for eighteen years. People have no idea I'm an idiot. Um, they're great.
Are you sure?
So lean on them, and you have your fellow council members here who are fantastic. We work together well. We also sink or swim together. So you'll you'll understand that as you spend more time here, even though we have differences oftentimes, we are viewed as one. And we work together as one and we all take care of each other. Um, everyone here will be there for you. I know it. There's a great group. Sam, thank you for making our lives so difficult the last week and a half. That decision was incredibly difficult. I've gone through, I believe this is third one, and we've never had anything like that. That speaks to the quality of your candidacy. Appreciate that. I uh, I, first time I went up for an appointment, I also did not get selected. And don't be discouraged. Go back. I do echo Mr. Elwood said it. Uh, do consider the planning commission is probably one of the best commissions to learn so much about the city. Whatever your passion is, I thank you for serving in any capacity. Uh, but do kick that one around. I think it's good advice. But thank you so much for taking the time to apply, taking the time to go through the process. I know it was lengthy. Thank you.
Fair pros him.
Congratulations, Errol, and welcome to the Everything is Your Fault Club.
Yeah.
You're gonna love it. It's a good time. And to Sam, I appreciated your honesty. Uh, you had really good ideas. A lot of them probably would have never happened, but you didn't know that. But I liked your forward thinking and yes, please continue on.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tramalana, we'll give you the opportunity for uh, closing out council remarks as your first official act, if you'd care to.
Sure. Uh, I I obviously I I need to say something to Sam. I I actually, Sam and I met both in the citizens academy, so we've known each other a little bit throughout this process. So uh, Sam, I appreciate uh, you being a part of this. Um, and I think as we've spoken earlier, uh, we need more of us uh, from the academy, the the younger growing families in town to participate at every level. Uh, so yes, a hundred percent want to help you along to uh, join planning uh, for my seat or another one. So and thank you very much. And then staff, you've been available all through my general election uh, and through this process. And many of you up here and former council uh, folks, so just appreciate that and the the businesses and and the neighbors that um, sent phone calls and messages uh, not only last week but previously. Uh, I certainly wouldn't be here without that support. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, obviously, I would be echoing a lot of what's already been said, but I'm I'm gonna take it a little different way. Certainly, certainly appreciate every uh, person who put themselves forward as 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 just chairing and watching the process. Uh, it I I would echo the comments they're making, very difficult uh, conversation and trying to land on the choice. Um, and very valuable that everyone steps up. I also want to point out perhaps the best legacy is the Citizens Academy, and that's coming up again this next year. So not only did these two finalists both sit on that, but others were a part of that. Your new uh, school board member was a part of the Citizens Academy. It's the best thing we've done here in the city in that regard in far as opening up and getting folks engaged, learning about their government in a long, long time. I'm very proud of that. I'm excited about it, and I hope if you're out there listening and considering it, that you're there, you're watching for the that application early next year. Um, and and look at that. Um, I'm also very pleased that on uh, from that first class, in addition to the candidates we've talked about, that we've had several that have gone on to commissions, planning commission, economic development, uh, plant uh, Parks Commission and showing that success as well. So I'm gonna leave it at that. Um, thank you all for that. Welcome, Council Member Tramalata. Congratulations on that. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.